Can everybody hear me okay? All right. Thank you very much. Welcome everyone to tonight's city council meeting of March eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. I would like to ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor McLaughlin.
I'm here.
Counselor Runyon.
Here.
Counselor Randall.
Present.
Counselor Richardson.
Present.
And Mayor Mays, I did see Counselor Long Curtis earlier, but I'm not seeing her now.
Okay, I'm sure she'll show up presently. And I'm here as well. Okay, next on the agenda. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask Counselor McLaughlin to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
This is Randall. I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I will second. This is McLaughlin.
It's been moved by Counselor Randall and seconded by Counselor McLaughlin to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is presentations and proclamations. And first, we have a special award to announce for the Fort Dells Museum. And their executive director Cal McDermott is here with us today. You all have in your packet a certificate of recognition. I'd like to read it very quickly here. Congratulations on being the best in your field. The Fort Dells Museum has been selected by the readers of True West Magazine as the, and I quote, "The best preserved historic fort of the West for two thousand and twenty-one." This award is a testament to your hard work and tenacity to be the best in your category and recognized by the people that love the West. On behalf of the city council and the citizens of the Dells, please accept our congratulations and sincere thanks for your dedication to preservation of our history.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, go ahead. If you'd like to say a few words, go ahead. Please proceed.
I always like to say a few words. So it is an honor to be associated with the Fort Dells Museum. It's just been a real interesting challenge, for the most part, very positive to take it from where it was six years ago as to where it is today. But I also really want to thank all of those people from the very first people who started that museum in nineteen-five, who had that vision way back then with no thought of cruise ships or freeways or anything like that to develop a institution like that to preserve the history of Fort Dells. And I think it is just a wonderful addition to the city. I'm so pleased to be a part of kind of getting it livened up again and making it a people place. And looking forward to getting open. And when we are, please come up and take a look. I'd love to show you around. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Cal. I'm still looking forward to having my ten-year-old grandson come up and volunteer.
Hey, I'm getting ready to do volunteer shout-outs this week, so.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? Okay, with that, again, congratulations and congratulations to your board of directors as well. I'm sure they had a big part in making this thing successful.
Definitely, and thank you again very much.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is employee recognition. And I'll be saying a few words, but first I'd like to turn it over to our human resources director, Daniel Hunter, for a staff report. Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. So the employee recognition program's been around for many years. And in two thousand and eighteen, the city council adopted Resolution eighteen dash zero-two-eight, amending the program. And in large part, that was one to get larger buy-in from not just employees, but also city council. Previously, there was some understanding among employees that only supervisors could nominate employees. And now all city employees could nominate their peers. City council members can nominate employees. So it's a much broader pool to get nominations from. This year is actually the first year we received any nominations. So actually, it was twenty-twenty for the nominations. And we received eight nominations. The Mayor Mays, myself, and city manager Julie Krueger looked through the nominations and selected the winners of the awards. We didn't have any any nominations for innovative thinker this year. We did have nominations for customer service and team player award. And the winners of those two awards were unanimous amongst the three of us. And with that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Daniel. I think it bears mention the names of the people that were nominated because it was a very difficult decision for the three of us to make. And I just wanted to mention that the nominations for the excellent customer service award were every police officer was nominated for that award. And also the water distribution operator, Richard Prentice. And the winner that was selected, if you want to call him the winner, it's kind of like the Academy Awards. The award goes to Maggie Pondo of the library, and she is here with us tonight. And the nominations for team player award were transportation division manager David Mills. Again, every police officer, IT specialist Peter Bradley, equipment operator Nathan Munson, safety the library technical assistant, excuse me, I just mentioned Maggie, she was nominated for this as well. Finance director Angie Wilson and water distribution operator, again, Richard Prentice, who was also nominated for the excellent customer service award. And after a lot of deliberation and a very difficult decision, the award for the best team player for the city is Bailey Volk, our safety officer, who is also here with us tonight. So I see Bailey holding up his certificate, which he's obviously very proud of. Maggie, if you can un is there any way you can put your video on?
I'm trying to. I apologize. I am here. Hold on.
Okay, and I trust you're also holding up your security layer. Okay.
Yes, there we go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and a job well done to both Maggie and Bailey. Thank you. How about a nice hand? You guys keep up the good work. Thank you very much. Okay, third on the agenda, or third under presentations and proclamations is a proclamation declaring Red Cross Month. And I'm going to read this very quickly. We also have the executive director of the regional Red Cross with us tonight, Nadine McCrendle. But I just, I'd like to read this proclamation. The Red Cross, American Red Cross is a humanitarian organization that eases people's suffering during life emergencies throughout Oregon, across the United States, and around the world. The Red Cross Cascades region has a long history of helping our neighbors in need by delivering shelter, care, and hope during disasters. Make our community safer through providing lifesaving blood, teaching skills that save lives, and supporting military veterans and their families. Last year in the Cascade region, more than three thousand volunteers helped the families affected by over six hundred and fifty home fires by addressing their urgent needs like food and lodging and providing recovery support. Meanwhile, when large disasters like the Oregon wildfires devastated our region, volunteers from our area and all across the country provided one hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine overnight stays, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety meals and snacks, and nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five relief items, emotional support, recovery planning, and other assistance. The Red Cross continues to carry out the organization's one hundred and forty-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. During the trying times of COVID-nineteen pandemic, people have stepped up to help others in need, whether it was responding to this year's record-breaking disasters across the country or rolling up their sleeves to give more than a one hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred units of blood in the Cascades region when our country faced a severe blood shortage. This lifesaving work is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. So I, Richard Mays, mayor of the city of the Dells, hereby proclaim March of two thousand and twenty-one to be Red Cross Month in the city of the Dells, Oregon, and encourage all citizens to join in this observance. I thought I, oh, there she is. Ms. McCrendle, welcome to our city council meeting. Congratulations on the and I'd like to offer you the opportunity to say a few words to our city council and citizens.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Mays, and good evening, Mayor Mays and counselors. Thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening and express our gratitude to the city of the Dells for proclaiming March as American Red Cross Month. As you mentioned, my name is Nadine McCrendle, and I'm the executive director for the Central and Eastern Oregon chapter of the American Red Cross. Thank you for supporting our mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies in our communities. March is a special month for us because it is selected to coincide with the birth of our founder Clara Barton, now two hundred years ago. It was her dedication and care for those in need that became her humanitarian calling and to later start the American Society of the Red Cross. During disasters like the Oregon wildfires, American Red Cross is there taking care of people. We make sure that they have a safe place to sleep, they have a meal, emergency relief supplies, health services, whatever they need. But what you won't always see physically is that we are also providing hope. When people are facing the worst days of their lives, we are there to provide compassion, comfort, and hopefully, one day soon, a shoulder to lean on, perhaps even a hug. And this all began with a very determined woman whose legacy continues today. And I thank you for honoring her and all of the volunteers and donors that helped to support, deliver our lifesaving mission each and every day. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all you guys did, especially during the wildfire situation here. You guys were all over the area, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. McCrendle? Okay, once again, thank you very much for coming, and it's nice to put your face with the phone calls we've had. And you're welcome to come here anytime. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Item six on the agenda is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Five minutes per person will be allowed. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the city council on anything that is not on the agenda for up to five minutes? And I see one hand up, Mr. Jim Wilcox. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Rich, and councilpeople. I really like the fact you're giving out awards, by the way, to the city employees. That's a great idea. I come to you tonight with an issue that about fifteen, twenty years ago, I worked with our utility billing for the city and worked out a little problem there. But another one just recently came up that I wanted to bring to your attention. And I also, not just, I don't want to bring a problem, I want to bring, I think, a reasonable solution. And the problem is, most of landlords, if they haven't received it, will. And I didn't realize I had one until a friend of mine who's also a landlord brought it to my attention. There's a document that you sign with the city. If you have, if a tenant moves and you want the water left on, you sign and say, "I'll pick it up" when they sign out. Well, the new one, and I don't remember this before, but it also says that if they don't pay the bill, you, the landlord, are stuck with it. I don't want unpaid bills by anybody. But there is no provision to let the landlord know if that bill is unpaid, if it is supposed to be paid by the tenant. And the lady sitting with me tonight has had a situation where a tenant moved out, did not pay the last rent, and had over seven months unpaid bills. Well, the city water sewer bill is about a hundred and five dollars. I'm rounding off. It's, that's within a buck, I think. Seven months to that is ugly. And if you look at what's happening, it's very possible that a landlord in this, in our community, any community in Oregon, could be going fifteen months without receiving any rent. And a person has to do is say, "Well, it's COVID-related," without receiving any rent. And then if they are supposed, whether they are supposed to be paying the water bill, or the landlord took responsibility, you can have up to fifteen months of water bills. The only help that landlords are even being considered for in the legislature is some help if you give up twenty percent of your income to get any help on the other eighty percent. Well, I got news. Is anybody on the screen right now willing to give up twenty percent of their income? I don't see hands going up really quick. Well, the landlords are getting beat up ferociously, and I can tell you from my livelihood, which is real estate, that there's a lot of homes in the Dells that are now going from rentals to owner-occupied. That does not help the rental situation, does not help our housing situation at all. And every time you add a disincentive to being a landlord, you have fewer rentals. So I'm asking the council, I'm not asking you to give up the money and not collect, but what I'm asking is with this policy, this policy is that you add if the city has a tenant that's signed up and it's not the landlord, the owner, but it's a tenant, and that tenant goes a period of time without paying, that the landlord is notified. Right now, the answer my friend got was, "Well, anytime somebody moves out, you'll have to call the city and see if they owe anything." Holy crap, that's wrong. If you expect us to pay it, tell us upfront. So maybe we can do something about it before it gets out of hand. But to just say, "We're not going to do anything to collect, but when the time comes, it's on you, landlord," that is not right. That's absolutely not right. So my suggestion is, okay, you got to get the bills paid, because those that aren't paid, Dave Anderson and Angie, we know somebody's going to pay for them eventually, and it's going to be the other ratepayers, and I don't want that to happen either. So I think to work a little more closely and give the landlords a break, don't just sit back and allow those bills to roll up. If a tenant is responsible for it, don't let it roll up. Let the landlord know. Or the property management, whoever. Once they're notified, if they don't pay, I mean, they may not be able to do anything under the state's edicts right now. There's not a hell of a lot they can do. But at least they have some knowledge upfront that it's happening. But to put it on the landlord, to have to call to find out if there's a bill when somebody moves out, no. I think it's a courtesy and a service that you could give to local landlords to keep more landlords being landlords, making rentals available, to not keep it in the dark until it's a big bad, big bad bill, and then spring it on them. So that's what I'm asking. I get trying to collect it, both of us, and there's another person here with me. We don't want unpaid bills either, and we pay them on time. The other solution, that some people don't do this, I build it into my rent, so that if they don't pay the rent, I'm still paying the water bill. But at least I know that they didn't pay it. Others have it set up to where they only pay rent, and the water sewer is something the tenant takes care of. But I think we need to allow people to do what they want in their rental agreements and not force them, because we're going to surprise them with up to a fifteen-month water bill. And I know that this is in a terrible position. They can't shut off the water to collect, to help force the collection. So I'm asking notification as a reasonable, a reasonable thing to work through this. Done.
Okay, thank you. Has anybody got any comments or questions for Mr. Wilcox?
If I could have, I have the other person here with me, and she would like to speak to it. I'm sorry, first of all, Jim Wilcox, four sixteen West Seventh, and I know you need that for the minutes. And Kathleen, if you'd identify yourself.
Kathleen McFarland, eighty-three twenty Walton Ray Road. I have several duplexes in the Dells. And they're all fixed up, metered separate, so that each tenant can take care of that. If this is the policy, I find myself having to raise a security deposit immensely to cover the water that is unpaid. So their security deposit is also, is going to have to go up to cover that. So I just want you to make aware of that. That was when I called the city to ask about the water and found out it was seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-four cents for this tenant. I asked her what to do, and she said, "You need to build that into your security deposit."
If you're wanting to make it easier for people to rent, and that is a problem everywhere. If you're forcing landlords to increase their security deposit up to, say, two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars, and then the person has to come up with a month's rent of eight hundred to fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars, you're taking people out. They don't have the cash to rent. Help us out, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Last call for any questions or comments. Counselor Long Curtis?
Yes, Angie, I'm wondering if this is a problem because of COVID, whereas before people got turned off after only a couple of months? Is that what's going on, or is this something different?
Is COVID-related, but the Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Misunderstood.
I'm, Darcy, so the letter that they received in the mail was an update to a place that was put in a placeholder that was put in place a few years ago. So we were just updating our records, and that policy was put in place that if a tenant doesn't play their water bill, then it does go on to the owner of the occupied house. And what we do is typically is we do try to collect from all tenants, and it's the same process for an owner, and we eventually do door hangers, we do phone tree, phone calls, we do late notices, attempts to to shut off, and then we do the phone, then we do do shut-offs. Even if they're a tenant, even at this time, we still do shut-offs. And then at that point in time, that gives that person the ability to call and say, ask if, say if they need assistance, or if they need to pay on a payment plan or anything like that. So right now, the city works really hard to not try to turn off any tenant or owner. And we do try to set up where we are giving out grants for water assistance or putting them on payment plans or whatever we can do to help them. We're also referring them over to MCAK, which MCAK is offering assistance for utility payments, electrical payments, rent assistance. And so we do try to provide as much as we can. As far as us not notifying the landlord, we can send out landlord copies if that's something that they've requested to have. And we can send that out where they will be receiving that bill also on a monthly basis. And that's how the process has been.
Okay.
They are sending?
We, whoops.
Jim, let me just follow up with, does anybody have any other questions for our finance director? Okay, I think the point is taken, Mr. Wilcox, that that it's a question of not whether or not they're paying or making sure that they're shut off. It's a question of notifying the landlord when one of their tenants is in arrears. I believe that's the issue, so. Let's see. Jim, you're muted. I'll give you just, I'll just give you thirty more seconds, okay? Jim?
I would be willing to work with Angie to try and work out something so it doesn't create a whole clerical mess for them. I don't think every month is what we're asking. We're just asking at the time it gets down the road and they're almost into the shut-off that the landlord knows before it gets, you know, completely out of hand.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very, thank you very much, Jim. And Mrs. McFarland. Okay, item seven is city manager's report.
Now, watch the cool part about these meetings.
Thank you, mayor. I do not have a report for this evening's meeting.
Well, I have to agree with Mr. Wilcox. That is a very cool part about this meeting. Thank you. Anybody, let's see, next is city attorney's report. Mr. Kara.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Mays. Also, nothing to report for this evening, so I don't know how much fun Mr. Wilcox will be having. Thank you very much.
Okay. City council reports. First one I see is the Council Runyon.
I'd be continuing to tune into the League of Warden cities meetings generally on Friday. There've been a couple of others and others to come. But I will detail all that to Izetta as appropriate, pretty much the same ones.
Thank you. Counselor Long Curtis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my report tonight is about the winter warming shelters. Today is March eighth, and those will be closing on March thirty-first, so that's about three and a half weeks. We have some mainstream vouchers for housing that have come through as part of the COVID. And so we're able to get people into housing if we could find housing. That is the problem right now, is that I've got a bunch of people with vouchers but no place to move them into. Other than that, everything seems to be going well. The winter warming shelter worked just like we wanted it to, and we've got quite a few people in there with serious medical issues that probably wouldn't have made it through the winter. And we've got some other people that were able to get their lives together either with medical things being taken care of, or finding housing, or just basically having a place to be. So thank you to city council for that.
Thank you. Counselor Randall.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I received an email and a newsletter from the Goldendale Energy Storage Project. Other members may have also received this email, but I thought it was worth mentioning tonight. I've heard rumors of this project. Um, I've heard rumors of this project for a couple of years now, um, this is the first confirmation I've seen that it's a, uh, serious proposal. What it is, is a, uh, proposed $2 billion pump storage hydroelectric facility to be constructed at the former Goldendale aluminum plant, which is about 30 miles east of the DOWs. Now, it's estimated, this will generate 3,000, I'll say that again, 3,000 jobs during its four-year construction schedule. This is huge. Uh, the impact on our community, both positive and negative, will be substantial, especially if it coincides with the proposed expansion of, uh, of Google. We haven't seen this level of construction activity since the freeways and the dams were built back in the 50s and 60s. I encourage everyone to check out their website, it's the Goldendale Energy Storage Project. Uh, it's mostly promotional, but there's good information and there's some conceptual drawings of the project. And, um, anyone who's familiar with the, uh, with the proposed project site, uh, will recognize immediately the, um, the enormous scope of this project, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Council Randall. I know they reached out to me a year ago, and then I, I never heard anything until recently. I believe, uh, some other councilors have been contacted. Are they planning on having any public meetings out here that you know of, in the near future?
None that I know of, and, and like I say, I haven't seen anything in the news, um, this is the first, like I say, the first confirmation that I've seen, you know, solid, uh, evidence that this is a serious proposal, but yeah, I assume that there's gonna be more announcements, possibly some meetings, uh, it looks like the website is kind of set up to, like I say, to promote the project, so maybe they'll be seeking some input and some comments on that.
Mayor Mays, they have requested to do a presentation to the council in an upcoming meeting, I think it's the 12th of April.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Grossman. Before we get to, um, let's see, Councilor McLaughlin and Councilor, uh, Richardson, um, I, 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 I think I neglected to back, um, an audience participation, I think I cut it off after Mr. Wilcox, so after Council Richardson and Council McLaughlin give their report, I'd like to open it back up to the, uh, to the audience's participation to see if there's anyone else who would like to ask questions or comment. So with that, let's go to Council McLaughlin.
I have just one thing tonight, and that's, uh, at the airport, um, one task that was left to be, uh, accomplished was to complete an FAA document, uh, to resolve the city or the Dallas Port Water Rights, and that was due last Friday, and I just assumed that that was done, and that's the only thing I have to report.
Thank you. Council Richardson?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Uh, since last city council meeting, several little things, a number of constituent emails and conversations, mostly regarding people's concerns about Google. I have been, um, participating or, or zooming into the Chamber of Commerce Weekly Government Affairs presentations, and I'm actually up this Thursday at 7:00 to make one of those, so, uh, those are public meetings, so if anyone is inclined to be up at 7:00 and, and listen or play stump a counselor, I guess that's an opportunity. I attended last Friday, the 26th, I guess a week ago, Friday, the 26th, the, the first meeting this year of the, um, Community Outreach Team, I need to do some follow-up with that. And, uh, I think that's about it. I, I should say thank you, Mayor Mays, for also, I did have a walking meeting with you, uh, a week ago Monday to look at some potential urban renewal project sites, and I appreciate your time in, uh, doing some orientation there.
Thank you. Uh, Council Richardson, um, I also attended a county board meeting, um, last week, a beautification committee meeting on that same day, March 3rd, and an economic development committee meeting of, of Austin County on March the 4th. With that, uh, let's move back to audience participation. Um, my apologies for, um, cutting out of there too quickly. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the city council, uh, for up to five minutes? I, I see, uh, Mr. Murray?
Okay, hi, uh, I'm Steve Murray, I live at 2645 East 11th Street in the DOWs, and, uh, I was wondering what the city's response to, uh, losing the appeal to Luba over the, the development between 10th and 12th, uh, and, what is it, Richardson?
Richmond.
Richmond, uh, based on codes that weren't clear and, uh, I can't think of the word, but, it, does the city have any plans to rewrite codes so that at least they're not gonna lose any more appeals based on, put unclear codes?
Well, that question cannot be answered at this time, we just got the decision, uh, recently, and I know that the city council will be meeting soon, uh, probably an executive session to discuss that very issue, and as far as the, on, the, um, the codes, I would not necessarily agree that the codes were unclear, um, that is again something that we're gonna be discussing and, and directing staff to rewrite or to clarify if we, if we think, if we think that is necessary. Um, would anybody on the staff like to, uh, add anything to what I just said?
Mayor Mays, I don't have anything to add, um, we, we will respond to any direction you have about that, but with regard to the development, we'll be moving forward consistent with the direction we received from the state, and, uh, and moving forward with that development in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Director Cannon, um, will you take the occasion maybe to, you know, you and I had a conversation today, and apparently they've already started, uh, putting up a fence and doing some other work out there, and just so everyone knows, um, apparently what they're doing out there is, is completely, uh, legal and permitted, um, to do some minor light work out there, is that, isn't that correct?
Yes, Mayor Mays, um, the, the developer did come in last week to obtain a, a, a permit to place a perimeter fence around the site, so that has occurred, I learned of that today, so the permit was issued last week or the week prior, so that's happened. There is a little bit of, um, earthwork happening on the site, it is not, to a degree, we went out and looked at the site and took some photos this afternoon, it is not to a degree that would warrant a, what we call a physical constraints permit, so, um, that, it, a little more earthwork needs to occur for that to happen. We did have a good opportunity this afternoon to talk to the applicant and just about what those parameters are, so I guess at this point I feel confident that the applicant, developer knows, um, what he needs to do in order to obtain the proper permits, and knows the limits, um, of what can happen out on the site for now. Certainly, we invite, uh, feedback from folks in the public, if they want to reach out to our planning staff, we would answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Murray, uh, I'm sorry, you can't, we can't answer your first question until later, I'm sure some information on your first question will be coming out very shortly.
Okay, the, well, the second question I have then is, since the original denial of the permit was based on, uh, the potential safety, uh, lack of safety on, on nearby roads, has the city looked at, uh, bringing the roads up to a, a safer standard? Since that was part of your, your, uh, appeal, was the roads weren't safe enough, so do you have any plans to upgrade safety along 10th and 12th and Richmond?
No.
I know, I know that they have to do it around their, their, uh, development, but 10th and 12th have a ways to go before they're, they're brought up to standard, I think.
Right, I, I know what you're saying, and, and you're right about that, um, but this is the first time really the city council has been together since the Luba decision came down, so just like with your first question, we're not in a position where we can answer that at this time, but, uh, information will be coming out shortly on that, okay?
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure you guys were thinking about this stuff.
It's hard not to think about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions about this subject? Anybody? Okay, is there any other member of the audience that would like to address the city council for up to five minutes, on any subject that is not on the agenda? Is that another hand raised?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. When is the deadline to appeal to the Court of Appeals if, if someone was gonna do that?
We don't, we don't know. I don't know the answer to that question, I don't think anybody else does, except maybe our attorney, and I'm not sure our attorney can answer that until we have a chance to discuss this as a group.
You don't think we'd miss that though, do you?
I, I doubt it, I, I really don't, I really doubt it. Mr. Kara, do you have anything you could say that would be enlightening, or, Ms. Cannon? Go ahead.
Mayor Mays, um, I don't have the document in front of me that tells me when that, um, appeal date is up, I believe it's next week, um, I think it's March 17th, it's 21 days from the date of decision, so whenever that decision was issued, 21 days from that date.
Okay.
And I think I calculated, and I believe it might have been in or around, uh, March 17th.
That sounds right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last call. Okay, thank you very much, we'll move on to item, and the consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the important items and issues. Any councillor may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the act, action items section. Tonight, we only have one item on the consent agenda, and that's the approval of the February 22nd Regroth City Council Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilor Lon Curtis?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Council Mayor, uh, I will, this, Council Runyon, I'll move to second that.
It's been moved by Council Lon Curtis and seconded by Council Runyon to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 11 is discussion, uh, 11A is further discussion of the Google Strategic Investment Program. As you all probably know, the, uh, the, um, negotiating team negotiated a tentative agreement with Google, it was presented at the Joint City-County Meeting, at the County's Board Meeting on, uh, February the, um, 8th, I believe it was? No, the, um, 17th, and then it was brought before the city council, our meeting on the 22nd of February, um, the meeting, or the, the agreement itself is still being worked on by the attorneys from both sides, and for that reason, we don't expect that the, that the, the agreement will be approved at, as we had hoped on, on March 22nd. So last week, on the 17th of March, the County Board, uh, held another discussion and entertained some questions from audience members and from county commissioners, and those questions were, uh, answered, and now I would like to conduct this particular part of the meeting similar to what the county did last week, and that is to open it up first to, uh, city council members who would like to ask a question, or make a comment, then we'll open it up to the audience, and then, uh, we'll come back to the city council for any wrap-up. So with that, I want to also let everyone know that we do have three county officials with us tonight, uh, that help us answer any questions, that would be the County Administrator Tyler Stone, uh, Administrative Services Director Matthew Cleves, and the County Assessor Jill Amory, thank you very much to Jill, Matthew, and Tyler for, uh, attending our meeting on this subject. So with that, let's open it up to the city council, uh, does anybody on the council have any questions they would like to ask regarding this project at this point? Or comments? Seeing none?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Sorry, I, I trust everyone had a chance to see their emails from, uh, Matthew, I just wanted to follow up on this, I know there was some question or, or a number of questions, basically going to the point or the, the, uh, the query, does this deal, no, tentative deal, um, you know, is it a good one? Are we, I, have we negotiated a good deal in comparison to other communities? And, um, there was some discussion at the county meeting that this was difficult to compare, you know, every deal has its own parameters and, um, various aspects, so they're not, um, precisely comparable. And yet, if you do look at, um, the email that, uh, we received this week, you see that, across the board in Oregon, I think over the last 15 or so years, the average is something like, uh, 30% value of a large industrial project, um, gets paid on, you know, not, they're not paying 100% of value, there, various projects that get entered into SIPs or enter enterprise zone, but up to and about 30% on average, and the current deal, it's kind of a two-part deal, and our percent has been negotiated to 50 and 60%. So, um, that's, that's not 100, it's still quite a break, but it's, it's, stacks up pretty well when you look at other deals around the state.
Thank you, Council for pointing that out, um, yeah, I had a chance too to look at that table that was sent out, and, um, I would agree with you that I think your observation is absolutely correct. Anybody else? Okay, at this point, I'd like to open it up to the general audience, if there's anyone that would like to ask a question on the Google project or make a comment, now's the time to either raise your hand. I can see, uh, about 25, 25, um, squares on my, on my screen, and I see there's 26 people in attendance, so, uh, chances are I'll be able to see if you'd like to identify yourself and, and ask a question. Anybody?
Mayor Mays, Roger Nichols.
Yes, sir, please, uh, identify yourself, your address, and-
Um, I'm at 1617 Oregon Street.
Thank you.
And my question is, I, I would like to get some more information about the proposed aquifer adjustments that, uh, the, or, the, uh, the city is proposing to deal with the increased demand for water, and I, I know that, uh, you have an excellent expert on the line.
Well, as we mentioned last, last meeting, uh, Mr. Nichols, uh, those details on what's on the water situation with Google is currently being negotiated and will be released in a, at a public meeting, um, probably in the next couple of months. Other than that, I don't really, not sure what we can say about it, unless, unless Mr. Anderson has something he'd like to add to that, or, but those details are currently being worked out, and the only thing we can say at this point is that we're ensuring that whatever we do with Google is not gonna impact water rates, nor will it impact the water supply to the rest of the city, we know that much.
I guess my question is to Mr. Anderson, assuming that we have, that this passes and everything goes through, what happens if we have a drought year? Will there be enough overhead to protect the water supply for the city, the DOWs?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't know you were gonna speak.
Go ahead, Julie.
We need to save that for the appropriate meeting, which is not tonight, tonight is about the proposed agreement with Google.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Questions or comments? Sarah Mall, did you have a hand raised, or, no, okay, sorry, I misunderstood. Okay, um, we'll cut it off at there, uh, last call, comments, questions about the Google project? One, going once, twice, three times?
Counselor Lon Curtis?
Counselor Lon Curtis?
Sorry, yep, so, just to clarify, in case some people aren't reading between the lines, Mr. Nichols' question about whether the agreement affected that or not, we're saying it, it does not affect it, all the, this vote tonight and what we're discussing-
All the, this vote tonight and what we're discussing is only about the compensation that we're discussing between the city and Google if they build something. So maybe people are kind of feeling like it's backwards, like they want to know what they're going to build and then how much we're going to get. But just so the public understands, this is, um, how much we would get if they build. And then whether or not they build and what it looks like, that's the next step, separate meeting, separate vote.
I would say that's very accurate. And I think, uh, people should understand too that, uh, we don't know, they could build one data center, they could build two, uh, but until this agreement is passed, uh, there's going to be, there can't be any consideration of the water or the numerous other things that Google has to go through in order to begin building one or two data centers. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, um, I'd like to, uh, Mr. Cleaves, is there anything that you would like to say? Or let's, let's go back to the City Council. Any other closing comments or questions? Anybody? Counsel Runyon, are you, uh? Did you want to say something?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was just, there's something covering up my microphone. Anyway, I love some, it's my favorite thing to do in the whole wide world. Uh, I just wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Cleaves if he was able to follow up with, uh, Mr. Jacobson from the Mclemmy Fire and Rescue Board and, and get the clarification that, uh, we discussed after Mr. Jacobs had left the meeting.
Oh, I, I have yet to follow up with him yet. We're still pending, um, the draft of the legal agreement to confirm that the information I provide to him is accurate, but it is certainly still on my list of things to do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, for my benefit, if not anybody else's, could you repeat, repeat what the question was? I don't, I don't, what was?
Part of his, part of his question was about the, um, gap payment and, um, its process.
I see, yeah, you're right. Okay, thank you, Matthew. Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you all very much. Uh, Mr. Cleaves, Mr. Stone, Ms. Amory, thank you very much for attending as well. And we will close this portion of the meeting. Item 12 is executive session. Bear with me, I have a script to read. The City Council of the City of the Dows will now meet in executive session in accordance with ORS 192 dot 6602H to consult with counsel concerning the excuse me, the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed and ORS 192 6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session concerning pending litigation. Representatives of the news media will not be allowed to attend the executive session concerning labor negotiations. Representative of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the discussions or deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. Period. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. Okay. So with that, I'm going to adjourn this portion of the meeting and we'll see you on the other side in your, in executive session. Thank you very much to everyone.